All right, we will reconvene back into our workshop and we will pick up back on budget discussion with Marina.
And Council has talked about this last year about the trailer fee, you know, they're using city property and they're not paying a fee. I was actually with North Point Marina for a long period of time, well, a couple of years, two, three years, and they eventually went to a fee. And it's, we could do it. Again, we've got some that are from this area that would be able to take their trailer home and maybe even those that live outside the community that's renting could do the same thing. But either way, it is a trailer fee, so one of the things I wanted to bring up based off of Councilmember Palin's request.
I asked the chief, how do we know who's got trailers there? And he told me that the previous Marina manager had a system of some kind of plastic tags that were issued, and he had a list of people. I'm not aware that there is a current list, but my, my observation is that's a very picturesque spot. And Dennis, you just told me that the 640 line comes up close to the tanks. We couldn't put anything below that, but above that, I could see having a park where you had a food truck in there on weekends with all the people that use their boats and have no place on the lake to get a sandwich. Or, and maybe some park tables and chairs, or even a restaurant or a bar, but that's a waste of a beautiful spot.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the 640, 2 line, whatever it is. I just know that they, they had us, they, being the Corps of Engineers, had us file some paperwork requesting a flood easement to allow them, just in case, you know, the lake gets to a high enough level, they, they are allowed to flood certain aspects of, around the lake, and that's, flood easement isn't an option, so you have to do it, and they have to give permission.
I know one thing.
I don't know where this, this, the trailers are in relation to that flood easement, but I know it's got to be close.
Well, I know one thing, you can't have a flood easement where the bathrooms are, where the fuel storage is.
Actually, I think they are in it. That's, I think they are actually, and I'll get clarification on that. It's not that it was supposed to be that way, but I think, and Ronnie's not here, but I'll ask him to send me an email, and I'll send it out to everybody, so that way I don't misspeak.
Okay, I, I don't see why we should have people storing trailers there in the first place, but we certainly should know who they are, and whether they still have a boat in the Marina, and whether they live in Morgan's Point or not, we should have basic information on who's got them.
I can tell you-
I think that's a great first step.
I can tell you as a long-term resident here, that a lot of people who have their, their boats in that Marina have trailers stored up there, and it was presented as that you get a spot in the Marina, you get to park your trailer up there. That was part of the fee at the time. Now, you know, if we're going to say that, that we're going to break that out and we're going to have a separate fee for parking trailers up there?
We're no parking trailers.
You can do it however you want to do it, I mean, but the fact is, if you're talking about adding an additional cost onto parking your trailer up there, for people who already have a slip in the Marina, that could be a touchy subject. And this has been visited before by different councils, I can tell you, and it's, it's a really touchy subject with a lot of people, because here's the reason why. If you tell people, okay, you can go park your trailer at your property, you're going to have trailers sitting in the front yard, you're going to have trailers sitting in the street, you're going to have all that, and I can tell you, because there's other communities on different lakes that experience this exact same thing. So we have to ask ourselves, do we want the trailers controlled in one place and contained? Or do we want them scattered around the city, sitting in people's front yards? Or, the other option is, we say, okay, we don't want the trailers parked there, allow a different spot for the trailers to be parked.
That's not a bad idea. Yeah, that's not a bad idea, but we don't know right now how many of the trailers belong to Morgan's Point residents.
You can run the plates on them, you can run the plates on them, tell that.
Yeah, so to expand on what I was-
Yeah, we just haven't done it in a while.
Right. Yeah, yeah, to explain, to expand on what I was explaining to Dr. Palin earlier, he asked if we had the list. We do not have a list. We did do an audit, and that audit was done while Dalton Rice was city manager, I believe, was the last one that we did, so it's been, it's been a little bit, so we could certainly do another audit of that. However, what I was explaining to him as well was when Bud was Marina manager during that time, he came up with a system that had more like cattle ear tags, and they had numbers on them, and they were assigned, if you had a slip and you opted to put your trailer up there, you were assigned one of those cattle ear tags to affix to the trailer. So that way, we had a list of, this was trailer number 172, and we could see that list, and it had, you know, their name, their address, and it was available to us as law enforcement as well, because the systems that are at the Marina right now, we do not have access to. So the only thing we have access to is plate information. Well, if something happens, we, it's, it's pretty cumbersome to find from plate information, telephone numbers, things like that, whereas if you have that list, it's a little bit easier for us to make, instead of jumping through several hoops just to find a phone number to call you, we have a little bit more information, especially if you're an out-of-town resident. If you're in town, we just drive to your house, of course, but as you know, I don't know what the current status is of how many are in residence and how many are out-of-residence. So a system like that, putting that back in place would be great.
Well, does it matter residency, or does it matter if you have a boat in the, in the Marina? I think Bruce said that it was if you have a boat in the Marina, you could put a trailer up there, not just if you're a resident.
Right, right, that is correct. However, there are no contracts, there are no signage, there are no procedures in place to manage that currently, so, and what I think was happened was, you know, it was a convenience factor, like, like Bruce said, it was more of a convenience factor, it said, hey, if you have a slip here, you can opt to park your boat here to save us the face of unused trailer being at your property. So I, I agree with that, but what happened was, I don't think there was the second aspect of the procedural of, well, how do we control that, who controls it, and the system in place to say, you know, is it somebody that, whether that person has a slip there or not, because right now, there's, there's nothing in place that says, or that, that we know of, outside of checking it daily, if, you know, if Bruce just wants to put his trailer and, and he has a slip at North Point, for example, if he just puts his trailer, or puts his boat in here, drives over to North Point, and then parks his trailer up there, you know? There's no system in place for that, and there's no, really no procedure as to what the city wants done if that happens.
Well, three things. One, this is the only Marina on the lake that doesn't have contracts. This is the only Marina on the lake that lets people park trailers. That's the second thing.
They didn't have a contract.
We have contracts.
They don't have a contract about the trailers.
I don't have a contract.
The day that you got your slip, you signed a contract.
Yeah. I don't have a copy of that. Okay, the third thing I was gonna, third thing I was going to say is, I think Bruce said it, we have other places that are minimally used, that are not gorgeous lakeside properties with bathrooms, where we could have people park their trailers, if you want to be so inclined.
And, and to expand on that idea, that was explored by Dalton Rice as city manager as well. I know they had talked about using part of the property that we know as the pit, more or less near the animal shelter, or temporary animal shelter, and they were, you know, it was the idea of having a keypad installed with an automatic gate so that the residents could, if they needed to grab their trailer, it didn't, it didn't take staff involvement, that it was a separated area that they could drive into and get access to as a, as a trailer owner or a slip owner. And then, but at that time too, they were also talking about a fee as well to recoup some of the management of things and things like that, so, but yes, that idea's been explored previously as well.
Well, we also don't have a recent audit, you said, so we really don't know how many of the boat owners in the slips or the trailer owners are residents of Morgan's Point Marina, Morgan's Point Resort.
Right, yeah, we, yeah, we don't, law enforcement, as far as the law enforcement aspect, we don't. Now, you know, the Marina, Catrice and through, through Ronnie, they would have the information on who, who is that, as far as the trailers up there. Like I said, we could have a trailer up there that somebody didn't, you know, put their boat in and docked it somewhere else, and they just parked the trailer there, so, and that could happen too, and then the, so there needs to be, and on top of that, there's, I think Bud, right before he retired, they put in a system of, you know, there was just trailers parked all willy-nilly, to use some words. There was no system about how to park it, where to park it, things like that, and so there was no, it was just trailers parked this way, trailers parked this way, you couldn't get this one out because this one was parked here, and so there needs to be procedure as well as managing how many trailers you can fit there, with the expectation of how many trailers can you fit there, and how many is the cutoff, because, you know, not everybody in the slip can afford, it's a small spot, but a beautiful spot, but it's not large enough to park every, every, if every slip owner put a trailer in there, it's not large enough, and so there needs to, needs to be some discussion on, you know, how do you manage that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Dennis's question, just to get back to Dennis's question, is do you want him to consider trailer fees in the upcoming budget? And so I guess my vibe would be, listening to everybody, would be, Dennis, maybe first, I'm not opposed to a trailer fee at all, maybe first we need to understand whose trailers are up there, and do an inventory. Who has a slip in the Marina? How does that match up to the Marina bill? And then what are the other trailers that are there that don't have Marina slips? And then the second piece of that is, so what do we do with those trailers that you do not have a Marina slip with? And then I guess simultaneously, review another location to move those trailers from, what I agree with Sam, is a prime location in our city and beautiful, and I, people picnic there all the time, and it's, I can see us making that a lot nicer. So the second piece would be to evaluate an alternate spot for the trailers, and then, thirdly, the trailer fee, and what will that be? That's kind of what I'm hearing.
And, and to help Dorothy from the law enforcement aspect on that, the, as far as your question about what do you do with the trailers that are there that are not slip owners, we've been through this before, it's been probably 2015, 2016, when the last time that was actually done, but you would have to seize those trailers, move them temporarily to a secure location, you would have to send certified letters to the owners of those trailers if you can identify them. If they do not come and claim their property within a certain amount of time, then we, as the city, the city goes to the county and does a property hearing, and basically says, we want these items awarded to the city, and then the city owns them and it can be auctioned or done with, however governments, or governance models see fit.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
I have a question, a side question with that. From what I looked at, you know, I walked through and looked at those trailers one time, and it looked like many of them were not even current licensed. Would that not be a minimum requirement we would have if you want to park your trailer, that you have a current registration on the, on the trailer itself?
Yes, that, that would be, that would be our recommendation, it has to have current registration on it, as well as be operable. And that's the thing is, is, you know, over my years of being here, I have seen slips, or boats in slips that have never left the slip, and probably, there's probably one or two that's probably there today that have probably, I say that, things are a little bit different, but for years, there were boats that never went out, they were owned by people who don't live here, which is, which is okay, but they never went out, and unfortunately, you know, for a resident that's trying to get a slip, you know, and for a person who lives out of town that never takes their boat out and just lets it deteriorate, that's a disservice to, to, to the Marina itself and to the, to the, but yes, to answer your question, it would be, we would ask for a current registration and to be operable, no flat tires, you know, something that, because if something happened and we needed you to come get your trailer immediately, for whatever reason, we needed those to be operable, you know? So.
So would that be the same thing if we moved those trailers, say, to the pit area and, and the trailer owner was paying $2 a month to store it there? You're going to still require them to have current license and registration?
Yeah, I would say that, because again, if, if you needed to come get your trailer and take it to get your boat out for whatever reason, you, you, it's-
But what if they never get, go to take their boat out? What I'm getting at is if you go rent a, a spot somewhere where they store boats-
Yep.
Like a storage, yeah.
My understanding is, you don't have to have current registration on it because it's not being used, that doesn't come into play until you hit the roadway.
Correct, you're correct, but we would ask that because of, of anything else, it's like having your vehicle, because we do have it done that way, because on top of that, let's just say you decide to, worst-case scenario, that I don't know if it's ever been, then played out before, what if I sell my boat that's in the Marina at the slip to you, and I just say you can have a slip? Do we have, do we have procedures that are in place for that, that says, well, I'm going to just take over the payments, or you're going to take over the payments on my slip, and I sold you the boat, you go register it, and now you also have the trailer up there? Well, if you don't register that trailer, the boat's a whole different story, that's a criminal offense that takes another level, right? Because it's parking a lot of life. But if you don't register that trailer, then I have, I'm come, you're going to, the law enforcement's going to come to me because it was last registered to me, and it's, it's why we ask for current registration as well, so that's why we would ask that. And then again, worst-case scenario is if something happened and the city decided, hey, we need this property, or say FEMA disaster, hey, we need everybody to come get their trailers, or we needed this, something happened to where we needed to excavate those trailers from where they're at, and we didn't want to do it as on the city, we wanted you to do it, and we call you and come get you, tell you to come do it, we would not, we would just be setting you up for a failure by allowing you to do that with unregistered trailer.
Yeah, I just see it from another standpoint of the residents, some of our residents who have boats in the slips, and they do have trailers there, and we're going to require them to have a current registration, those registrations can cost upwards of $75 a year.
Yeah, but they're parked, they're parked on city property, it's not private property, they should be registered. Here's another thing.
And for me, for me, I always look at it this way, and this is, this is a personal thing, because I understand, I understand what you're saying, Bruce, completely, but for me personally, not from the law enforcement aspect at all, but for me personally, I'm not going to have a boat and a trailer that I'm not going to have current registration on both of them, regardless of whether they're separate or not, that's just, that's just me, it's like my vehicles, you know, if I'd ever drive my vehicle and put it in the garage, I'm still going to have current registration on it, you know? Because it, that's, if, if you need it, you need it, and that's just the right thing to do, in, in my opinion, you know? I see why you're saving money, if you're never going to pull it out, if you're in there a slip for five years, and you're never going to pull it out until the last day you leave, I understand that, that's $75 a year for, you know, five, five years, it adds up, but that would just be me, personal perspective, again.
It sounds like we need to talk about this a little bit more, and maybe we can let Dennis move on with his budget, and give him some guidance on the budget, and then can we circle back to this at the August meeting?
Can I have one more question, then? Is there, we have zoning ordinances in town, and there's zoning enforcement, certainly, there are boats in that Marina that are half-sunk, that nobody ever comes to. Is, is there anybody looking at that? Does Parks and Rec do that, or?
I would, yeah, I would defer that to the Parks and Recreation, and then on top of that, they're going to turn back around and circle back and say, that's your Marina, if you allow that to be that way, to, then, then that's on your Marina, you know, unless it fully sinks, then it's a whole different story, but.
Well, there is a requirement in our lease, the lease with the Corps of Engineer, that public safety and health is always factored in, so I don't know if these things are a risk by, by where they're at, if they're half-sunk, I don't know the situation, but the Marina manager can be looking and give us an assessment on that. Can I, can I highlight something on this? Taking, knowing full well, this is going to take another discussion, for sure, there, the budget that we're dealing with right now, the proposed budget, we're kind of on a time crunch, and I really need to focus on that, but if we're looking at possibly a different location with improvements that will cost money, and if it's a fee's associated with it, that's fine, but time and funding, timing to get it in place and the funding it would cost to do it, it would likely be something that, well, two things, one is, it doesn't need to be decided on August 12th when I deliver it. If you all want to do a mid-year budget review, that's, you've done it this year, you can do it this, next year, and so I'm saying, and that can be done at any time. I would just think that it's going to need some time to flesh it all out, Ronnie's not here, I thought he was going to be here, but something must've came up, but we can definitely get all this information and make that a topic for discussion in the future, and it really won't hurt the delivery of the proposed budget and make sure we can do it right and have all this stuff factored in, if it's okay with you.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay with that?
I would just add, you know, I'm fully supportive of Dennis's plan to have a boat for, store, trailer storage fee for that. I mean, it is taking up a beautiful piece of property, even if you consider an alternate location, it's still going to take up a piece of property that's available for something, so, and it's a service just like anything else the city is providing, you can't, you can't do everything for free, so I'm fully supportive of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that wraps the, essentially, the agenda minus the executive session, so, so we will move into executive session now. City Council will journ into deliberations starting personnel matters pursuant with Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. So, staff, thank you very much for your support this evening. Those of you that are still sticking around, for sticking around. Those of you that are still sticking around, first sticking around.
Oh, rub it down.
Oh yeah, come on.
Oh, never mind, never mind, okay.
No, we'll take it.
Okay, we will conclude the executive session. There were no decisions or actions taken from that. We are back into the council workshop at which time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
When do we adjourn?
Second.
Second and both.
Yeah, all in favor, everybody? All those opposed, next. Okay.